Parker Street. It was Columbus Day, a federal holiday on which there is not supposed to be construction at that site. The police dispatcher said that they would send someone out. Thirty minutes later, construction had not stopped. I called the police back at 7:50 a.m. and was told that the lieutenant had decided that since construction had already started, they would not shut it down. One year ago, Columbus Day of 2018, there was also full construction. In response to concern raised at that time, a memo was sent by Bill Nemser to the police chief, clearly outlining allowable construction hours and days, and asking the police to, quote, "respond to ensure compliance," end quote. The police chief agreed that the police would, quote, "deal with the issue if there were a violation," end quote. Yet despite this agreement, Capital Group Properties and their subcontractors were allowed to continue work yesterday. So I am before you today for two reasons. First, to make you aware of this situation. Capital Group Properties and their subcontractors regularly have construction when it is not allowed and violate other aspects of the regulations that were carefully established by the planning board. Yesterday's violation was particularly egregious. A full crew, multiple large truck deliveries, heavy equipment in operation, and a full police detail directing traffic at the entrance to the site. And lastly, a failure on the part of the town to enforce its own regulations and honor the spirit of the N B O D. Second, I hope you can advise me what I and other abutters can and should do in the future when our right to enjoy our homes in peace on a federal holiday is violated. Thank you for your time.
Okay. So Greg, we just have to follow up with Bill?
I already have. So Ms. Saunders sent that same message as she read from to Bill Nemser, Town Planner, myself, and a number of other individuals, forming the situation. As I replied to Ms. Saunders already, we addressed it with Bill Nemser. Bill Nemser sent that to representatives of Capital Group as well as their construction management team, to the same effect that they are in violation of the agreed upon terms and they need to respect that. I also followed up personally with Lieutenant Noble, as Ms. Saunders referenced, with the same message, that our job is to enforce, you know, the terms that were due between Capital Group and the town, and he understood, and he said he would pass along to his sergeants and patrolmen for the future.
Okay.
And we're looking into enforcement measures for consequences if it happens again. I was unaware that it happened last year, but we'll, obviously, we don't want this to be a pattern.
Okay. Any other public comments? Okay.
Yep. So Eric Fonsbeck, 1-4 report, apartment three. Just wanted to reach out again. So I'll be here pretty much every Board of Selectmen meeting reminding you of the reason why I'm here, which is the water rates. I did want to give a shout out. Very appreciative of Mr. DiMarco for meeting with my wife today. The, excuse me, the tone that he struck with her in understanding the importance of the issue was a 180-degree turn from what we experienced in the past. I just spent about 30 minutes reviewing the video of past Board of Selectmen meetings and going through the interactions that I had. And the indication was that the board might, if the board thought it was important, they would review the water rates. Because at this point, the board understands that the water rates that are in place are discriminatory against people that live in multifamily homes and are lower income, for the most part. Mr. De Silva indicated that after the December hearings were over, after they looked at the property tax hearings, they would look at it, at the first indication, you know, first opening the Board of Selectmen had in calendar year 2019. So I'm here to ask, has anything been done? Has any consultant been engaged for water rates? Has anyone looked at the water rates since we last had our meeting in October? It was actually October 16th of 2018 that I was last here, standing in front of the board, arguing this case. Has anything been done? Has any action been taken? So at this point, from the videos that I reviewed and our interactions, a pretty significant number of the Board of Selectmen understood that it was an issue, that those that are underserved in the community are paying, essentially subsidizing the water rates for individuals that live in single-family homes, that have their own lot, they're paying higher rates. And that is, I have a problem with that, and the Board of Selectmen should also have a problem with that. Everyone in the town should have a problem with that. I understand that the new Department of Public Works head has an issue with it. He understands that it's a problem. He's just getting here. It's been a year, and no work has been taken. And in our last discussion, it was also indicated that, you know, it's a significant burden of work to understand where to set the rate. You have to work with a consultant to understand how the water is distributed, how it's billed. But nothing's been done. And as far as I'm aware from our last, from our last interaction, the water rates hearing is happening in December. So that's two months away, but nothing has been done. That's concerning to me, and I think that should also be concerning to you.
We have a consultant working on our water rates basically year-round, and they're aware, they were made aware of these issues. So it'll be part of the discussion.
Well, that's fantastic news. I'm very happy to hear that.
We also haven't had a DPW director since February, so the fact that we were without a DPW director until September 30th, you know, that also contributes.
Yeah, so.
Exactly.
So I do have to say that I'm very pleased that Mr. DiMarco is here, that he's willing to listen to the comments, but the indication was, at least this would be visited in December, and if there's a significant portion of work, I'm happy to help. I'm here.
I think, you know, in totality, there were several other moving parts to the conversation that took place.
Yeah, those have been taken care of.
I wonder if Mr. DiMarco is aware of all of those?
He is. We had a conversation, absolutely.
Give him the full file?
Full file. I believe he has access to it. So.
So we'll talk about that, too, but these are all your claims. These aren't necessarily claims that our experts have agreed with.
That's what the data states. It's not my claims.
No, your claim is that, your claim is who this is affecting, what socioeconomic people they are and all that. That's your, those are your claims. You don't have any data that supports that, other than what you say.
So, no.
Yes.
This is the, I believe you are incorrect. I hate to tell you this.
No, I'm not incorrect because, because what you haven't, what you haven't done is you haven't come with information that shows the income level of every person that you're claiming. You're making a lot of claims that there's a group of people that are, you know, mistreated or they can't afford water for various different reasons. You have nothing to support that, but your opinion.
So.
So we have a water insurer expert.
I do have information to support that.
We have a water and sewer expert that works in our H every year. They're aware of this conversation as of last year, and when we get to December, we'll have the conversation.
Yep. So does affordable housing or senior housing, does that qualify as lower-income housing? Affordable housing that has single meters attached to significantly large dwellings, multifamily dwellings?
To who?
I think there's, so the new development, 129 Parker Street, affordable housing, single meters, they're paying the highest rate. This doesn't affect me. We can afford the rates. I'm not saying that I'm here as a poor person. I can afford a bit of water.
I didn't say you were claiming you were, but you're claiming that there's a group of people.
Yes.
A specific class of people that are only being affected by this.
Absolutely. I live in the building with five other people, five other owners of their condos, and I live around owners and apartment dwellers as well that do not have the income to support certain things. So don't tell me that I'm aloof and I don't understand.
I'm just telling you that you're making a statement based on what you know, but we have no evidence of that.
It's based on the data. Do you want me to do a survey and find the income? So I'm disappointed in the way that the Board of Selectmen has, not all the Board of Selectmen, but I'm disappointed in the way that the chairman of the board has addressed these and said, you know, we'll get to it when we get to it.
That's not what was said. And I believe all the votes in regards to this were unanimous, so it's not one person making these decisions.
In regard to the water rates?
No, to all of the things that surround this particular instance that you're talking about. All these things were unanimous votes, and it wasn't just me, and trust me, I was the least of the problems in the whole thing, so.
But I think, Chris, I think he's here for a different reason.
Yeah, I know what he's here for. When we get to in December, that's when we'll get to, when they come with the water, you know, the water experts, that are going to suggest what our rates will be, then we'll have the discussion.
Yeah, I think it's, yeah.
We don't have the information in front of us to discuss it.
And I think that's the appropriate answer. I mean, we're going to take a look at it when time comes up, and I think by that time, Justin will be, you know, in tune to what's going on, and that'll be very helpful.
Fantastic.
I think part of our frustration is that each time we've come and we've addressed the board, we've been met with a lot of animosity, it's felt like.
I don't think it's animosity.
When I really, I'm trying to advocate for a group of people that I know could use some help, and that's why I'm here. I'm not here for me. I'm here for the people that I see around my house every single day with their children and their families, and I know that they could use a break. And I'm not here because I need a break. I mean, I would love a break, but I don't need one. And every time we come, it feels like we're being pushed away, when what we really need is to hear, we care about this issue, we know it's important, we want to help these people, too, and we really want to get to it. That's what we need to hear, not fighting. So that's.
I mean, and we are going to get to it, and unfortunately, it has taken this long. But the other thing is that when we see something coming up on the agenda, so like the water and sewer rates, there's a lot of background information, there are a lot of different, you know, personal meetings, there's a lot of different things that happen. So I will admit, I haven't had a lot of conversations about water and sewer yet because it's not coming up yet. I do, I am well aware of what you guys have said, and I haven't had a chance to have a conversation with Mr. DiMarco yet as well, but it doesn't mean those conversations aren't going to happen. And I think sometimes that's a frustration for a lot of people to see, is that, you know, you come in for public comments and you talk, and then we don't really respond, but it doesn't necessarily mean we're not doing anything about it. And I think sometimes that's a hard thing to communicate.
Yeah.
So I'm sorry that you feel that way sometimes.
Thank you.
But I had specifically asked out either the last meeting or two meetings ago in my comments at the end of the meeting, and there's usually no one left to hear them, actually. To have, right, in the minutes, for the consultant to get a message, to start putting together the statistics and data for us, to find out how many people in town this is affecting, how prevalent it is, and get back to us, and we'd have time to analyze it before that comes up in December.
Thank you.
That's fantastic.
Thank you. That's encouraging to hear.
The reason why I responded was, Mr. Gavin said nothing had been done, and I was hoping that something had been done. It sounds like something has been.
When I say nothing has been done, there's been no.
No decision.
No decisions, absolutely. So.
Well, we're grateful that things are moving, and thank you for making that happen.
Yes.
You're welcome.
We are appreciative, but it's unfortunate that for things to happen often in public office and in public discussions, you have to bring it to the edge and then pull it back once understanding is met. So I'll be here, essentially every Board of Selectmen meeting, to have the reminder and to make sure that things are moving along with that, because the board that makes the decision is you. So, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Anybody else?
Pardon me for getting back up, but I do feel like the issue that I raised was very quickly bounced over. I'm not talking particularly or specifically or in a limited way about what happened yesterday. Violations of the construction time happen every weekend, and it's been happening for years. The developer does not need to be reminded of the construction hours. They were part of those meetings. They know what they are. I really need to know. There are consequences and responses in place by the town when my rights to enjoy my property are violated. This is not a one-time issue. Saturday, they began work at 8:00 a.m. They're not supposed to begin work at 9:00 a.m. There's not supposed to be any construction activity on the site before 7:00 a.m. on a weekday. You should have counted the number of trucks that were coming onto that site between 6:00 a.m. and 6:30 a.m. this morning. This is constant, and the one recourse that the abutters were given for the action they should take when it happens was to call the police, and I called the police, and the police wouldn't do anything. I need to know what we're supposed to do and what the town will do.
Well, this is the first that this board has heard of it.
It's not the first that the town administrator has heard of it.
This is the first, this is the first time as a group, I don't know if anyone here individually has heard of it, I haven't. This is the first I've heard that there's been any, going back in any amount of time, that there's been violation of the hours of work. I've never heard it. So you're telling us today, and, you know, we have to, you know, not, we have to just find out what happened. I mean, not that we don't believe what you say, you know, we 100% believe what you say, but now we have to, you have to give us a chance to respond because we've never heard this.
I heard of yesterday's violation yesterday.
This is all news to us as a board, like, and, you know, David heard yesterday. None of us heard any, knew any of this until you stood up.
Mr. Johnson knew a year ago because he was copied on the memo that went to the police.
Excuse me, can I, Mr. Chairman, if I may? When I'm informed of the situation, I try to respond as directly and as quickly as possible. As the policy managers of the town, the Board of Selectmen are not responsible for the day-to-day operations of the town. You're correct that I am as the town administrator. Therefore, I allow for the staff, such as Bill Nemser, Mike Noble, the police chief, to implement the policies of the board or the other respective bodies. That particular issue is also very pertinent to the planning board, which I understand you've addressed multiple times to them. In this case, I would also reference you back to the planning board. They are the first stop before it comes to the selectmen for the enforcement of a planning board decision, which I understand most of that site and a lot of the references to the conditions you're setting was made by that board, not this body.
That's why a year ago, when this happened, I addressed it with Bill Nemser.
And what has been the planning board's response to you?
The planning board is not an enforcing board.
Actually, they do have enforcement abilities.
What is their ability?
They can, I'd have to look into the specifics of this for this particular agreement.
Yeah.
What is the enforcement ability of the planning board?
Planning board has the ability to always, if they can revoke or suspend a permit that they've issued, something like a special permit, if there's a violation. It's a bit, it's drastic, but they can do that. They don't have fine abilities, they don't have that ability.
And who does? What are the consequences for the developer who is spreading their own?
Right, so we'd have to look at the specific conditions of that agreement, because we cannot just impose new terms or fines or fees. It has, the consequences have to be in accordance with what was agreed to amongst the town and the body. I would also say that potentially the building commissioner could have some enforcement or, you know, some consequences. He could stop work, whatever the case may be.
And with all due respect, you can't reach him in the hours that the violation is happening.
That's correct. That's why I did speak again, with, personally with Lieutenant Noble, so that in the future, he would address this differently.
Which was guaranteed a year ago and was not honored yesterday.
So hopefully, moving forward, it will, because it was reiterated yesterday, so that, and I do understand, and I understand that frustration of you were told this and it didn't happen, and now it's happened again. I can, I can feel your frustration. But now, now that we're all aware of it, again, now that, and the police chief is aware of it, and Lieutenant Noble is aware of it, and Bill Nemser is aware of it, if it happens again, you need to let, you need to let them know.
I do.
And, well, and, okay.
And that's why I'm here tonight, because it's, there's still construction.
But I also think that she's making a point, and I think your point was well-taken, because we need to look at the actual agreement and say what the consequences are. I mean, if you are going to violate that agreement, we need to look, what is the consequences?
Right. And I think the question I have is also as far, and this is just because I'm new to the whole project, is that, you know, as far as construction on 129, you said that there were trucks there this morning. Is it that they aren't allowed to even come on the property between 6:00 and 7:00?
There, there is not supposed to be any construction-related activity, including deliveries before 7:00 a.m. on a weekday.
Okay, all right.
I would also encourage you to keep calling the police, because it sounds like from your, like, kind of the situation, yesterday was the first time you had called the police since this happened a year ago.
No, I, I've called the police at least four times in the last four weeks, and other times, they've actually responded. And it was not a comfortable situation for me to be in yesterday, when I called them back and felt like I was put in a position to argue with them because they weren't honoring their own commitments.
Okay.
And had a full police detail monitoring traffic around the entrance to the site.
Right. Unfortunately, I didn't know anything about the, about the agreement. I was thinking, wow, that's a great thing that they're doing construction that day because there's less traffic. So I apologize. I mean, I wasn't notified, but I looked at it and thought, wow, what forward thinkers there is.
I don't know if they were allowed to be doing construction on a public road yesterday. I don't know.
Yeah, I don't know.
I only know that they were not supposed to be doing construction on the site itself.
So Bill's here. Bill, I don't think there's any monetary penalties in that agreement. I think the monetary penalties are bylaw, right? They're in our bylaws.
That's correct.
So that's where we have to go for that.
Correct. That would come through the building commissioner, if it was something specific, like, for example, working outside of hours, noise, something like that.
Yeah, so I didn't.
If planning board is concerned, it would be strictly suspending or revoking a permit.
Yeah, because there's nothing in the, in the agreement itself that detailed any type of fines or penalties. It's all included in our normal bylaws. So we'll just have to find out what, you know, what those penalties are and have that discussion with the folks at Capital Group and make sure, you know, make sure it doesn't happen. That's all. They have watches.
Is there a particular day that happens more regularly? Like, is it like every, is it like it happens all, every Friday, or it happens, whatever?
Well, I'm looking for 4:00 every morning, and usually by 5:00, 5:15, there are trucks rolling onto the site. Not 4:00, 5:00, 1:00 or 2:00.
And between 6:00 and 6:30, I saw at least six. And they're not just coming on and stopping. They're backing up, they're turning around, beep, 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 beep. They're idling for a long time. Like, they're not just, they just drove in and stopped, you know?
Okay.
I could overlook it. So we should continue to call the police, and the police will respond?
Hopefully, hopefully it will get resolved, and you won't have to call anybody.
Yeah.
That's the goal.
Yeah.
But we'll talk to Bill, the building commissioner, and apparently Greg has already spoken to Lieutenant Noble. Okay. Any other public comments? Okay. Minutes, the minutes from October 1st meeting, and we can motion to move to accept and approve the minutes of the October 1st, 2001 meeting as shown.
Second.
He said 2001.
Did I? Well, there's a 1 there. 2019. Thanks. Stand corrected.
Back to the future. Wait a minute.
Rattled. She rattled me. All right. Anybody have any questions about the October 1st, 2019 minutes? All those in favor? Correspondence items. Make a motion that we accept the list of nine correspondence items, A through I, as shown. Two seconds.
Second.
Thank you. Which one of you was it? You?
It was me.
Okay, all right. I wasn't sure the voice. All right, so does anybody have any questions about those nine items?
It was just nice to see that Katie was recognized for her hard work.
Is he coming back, Bill Nemser, do you know?
Is Katie coming back?
No, it's Bill.
Bill.
Bill Nemser?
I don't know.
It's not, it's not. I just want to ask my question. So anybody have any questions about these nine?
No.
Okay, all those in favor?
Mr. Chairman, we can ask Bill to come back. Do you want to ask?
If he's around, I just want to ask him one question. I was going to do, I was going to do it at the end, but I didn't know he was going to be here. So if he's, if he's here, I'll ask the question if he comes back. But on the consent agenda this week, there are A through.
Put to A.
Only A, okay.
You're really rattled.
Don't go at it.
Motion to accept and approve the consent agenda item as shown.
Second.
Thank you. Anybody have any questions about this, the appointment of Jennifer Gardette to the Human Relations Committee?
No, not at all.
All those in favor? So does she know she has to get sworn in?
She will tomorrow.
Do I have to get sworn in for that?
You have to get sworn, no.
You have the liaison.
You have the liaison. We just didn't go up.
No swearing.
All right. Okay, so we're going to continue the public hearing of, continue the public hearing notice from September 17th, 2019, and legal notice that the Board of, the Maynard Board of Selectmen will hold a public hearing on Tuesday, September 17th, 2019, 7:20 p.m. in the Michael J.G. and Ernest Room, number 201, at the Maynard Town Building. The purpose of the hearing is to determine the new fees for trash stickers, and then there was a motion to continue the hearing to November 5th, 2019, which we'll make, but...
That would be tonight's motion.
That's right. So I read the hearing, but that's the motion at the end of it. So the hearing is open, and now, within that hearing, you'd like to make a motion to continue that hearing to November 5th, 2019. Two seconds.
Yeah, second, but just for public purposes, can we get an explanation as to why?
Yeah, we're going to explain. We're going to, we're going to continue the hearing while Justin has a chance to develop and assess the recommendations and make his recommendations to us and to the Budget Subcommittee as well, based on what he learns, his review of the trash sticker program.
That's great.
That's what we're going to change.
We just need some more time.
So, so am I personally to conclude that on the 5th, we're going to vote? Is that what we're doing?
We're going to, well, we're going to get Justin's data, yeah.
Right. So at that point, we're going to testify?
Yeah, it's possible we'll vote. We come to some consensus, I guess, yeah?
Conclusion, okay.
Okay. So, all those in favor of continuing the hearing to November 5th? Okay. So, that's, now, I'll make a motion to, to continue the hearing to November 5th. Two seconds.
We just did. We just did.
No, we voted on the motion. Now I have to, now I have to continue.
Oh.
Now I'm going to make a motion to continue it.
Okay.
All those in favor? So the motion, the meeting is continued now until November 5th.
Got you.
Retractor.
So this, there was, I guess, two votes within one, right? Two or three?
Retractor to 2011?
Yes.
Yeah, 2001.
2001.
Oh, Bill, I have a question. I was going to do it at the end, but I'll do it now. M A P C, the election?
Yes.
The, there's an opportunity for us, for me, is that, you know, the member to vote, or we can make a designation and authorize you to cast our ballot on the two items that are up for vote. And the only, there's only, the only real vote is for the Metro West Regional Collaborative, and that's Ashland and, Ashland or Framingham. The other three are all one, one candidate community each, so you'd only, there's one other three are all one, one, one candidate community each, so you'd only, there's one item to vote on, and that's the, you know, the Metro West Regional Collaborative. The others are all just one person or one community running. So I just want to know if you'd be willing to accept our designation as you being the alternate.
Sure, of course.
Okay, I just wanted to ask while you were here, okay?
I thought I was.
Well, yeah, but I have, we have to, we have to submit this form to make it official. So that's all. And it's attached to the, I think it's attached to, it's actually, we'll sign it, and it's actually attached to the absentee ballot, but, which we don't need, but we do have to send this to whoever, so that you can cast that vote for the time.
No, we haven't.
Okay. So, yeah, alright. That's done then. Thanks. That was, that was really all I needed. Appreciate it.
Good night, good night.
Thanks, Bill.
I'm back.
Okay.
He's like, now I'm really leaving.
These are 15. Okay. Request, special request for the use of Memorial Park, and I'll read it. It is a motion to accept and approve the request for Memorial Park on Sunday, November 3rd, 2019, from 11:00 a.m. to 12:00 noon, to play croquet on the lawn for a child's birthday party. Do we have a second?
Second.
Is it croquet or croquet?
Croquet.
But that's okay.
Croquet is something.
Croquet.
This is what the woman wrote.
It's very French.
Croquet, croquet, I don't know what it's pronounced. But, so...
As long as it's not crochet.
I don't know if everyone saw, there was an email that came, and Justin had some concerns and other concerns in, to relocate this event. So if you want to just, if you want to just tell us, Justin, what we're doing, what the thinking is. So does, does the, does the person who requested this know that we have other, two other options?
Yes. So I contacted Wendy this morning, late morning, and just stressed some of our concerns down at the DPW. The park isn't necessarily designed for sporting events, or kind of in this manner, the safety aspect of what she's looking for. So I explained our concerns, and then offered the two parks that were suggested by some of the staff that typically does this situation. I did run it by Greg, and I think Becky was looking at the permit process at the point, to see if we could switch it.
Well, I asked her what was available, and she said both of them.
Both of them, yeah. So, and that's pretty much what everybody said, is they typically don't get rented that often. She was completely okay with the switch, and we provided either or, so.
Okay. So do we have to?
Which one is it?
So you would not accept this permit, but accept a permit, an alternate for either...
Do you want to select the change? Which one are we gonna give her?
So, so because you, right now you have a motion, Mr. Chairman, for the Memorial Park, you do have to, like, vote against that?
Yes, you would vote against.
But only if it's a, only if it gets put on the table. Right now the motion is...
So I will withdraw the motion to, I will withdraw the motion to hold the event on November 3rd at Memorial Park. And I, I just think that it's, the two options are Coolidge or Rio.
Or Rio.
But Rio Road is kind of a small...
I was gonna say.
No, we get the field on the side of it, right?
I'm not, 20, 30 kids, that's not that big.
Yeah, it was a small event. It was a small event. And the croquet, again, you could justify if it's sporting or not. My potential was you open up for sporting. If you allow one, you start to allow others.
I'm with you.
She was fine with either or, with Coolidge or Rio.
I unsuccessfully argued that, your point, several years ago, there was a, I don't know what you call it, when you toss the beanbags, that one of the local bars put on, and I was opposed to it for the same reason, that I feel that that property, that, you know, I'm okay with concerts, because they're community events and whatever, but there is, there's a sacredness to Memorial Park, I believe, that goes beyond allowing, you know...
Cornhole?
Yeah. Yeah, and our concern was more the sporting and the safety aspect, and at the time of the request, we're going to be in construction, milling, what's that?
Nason.
Nason, thank you. I don't know the road stack well yet. Nason, and then we're putting in pedlights to the theater across the street. So there's a number of safety concerns I have with a lot of children participating at this event. So she was well aware of it, and she was just waiting for my phone call. I did ask her if she could make a decision, but I think, again, the short notice of it, planning a birthday party, she was open to either or, so she couldn't commit. But as long as both are available, I think we can.
I think Coolidge makes more sense out of the wall.
Coolidge School makes more, more sense.
It says 40 people in there.
Right, right. So I went off of what, I don't know either park yet. I went off of suggestions from my in-house staff that said either or would be a better location.
Fenced in, it's more safe.
Correct. It was playgrounds, they're designed for that.
It doesn't snow. It doesn't snow before then.
So they use yellow balls.
Yeah, so we'd be in a snow people's way. Alright, so I guess I'll make a motion that we move to accept and approve the request for Coolidge School Field on Sunday, November 3rd, 2019, from 11:00 a.m. to 12:00 noon, to play croquet on the lawn for children's birthday party. Two of a second?
Two second.
Thank you.
I also didn't like the idea of croquet balls and Summer Street and Nason Street traffic, just...
Croquet where you go through the little hoops.
I think they're wickets, right?
There were a whole bunch of things. There were a bunch of red flags, whatever.
Alright, next we'll be...
You knock the other person in, you try to get the stick at the end.
Alright, so, all those in favor of Coolidge School?
Thanks, Justin.
Thanks, Justin. So, that's good. And this is, this is that other thing signed for, for Bill?
Yeah.
That's, that's for Bill. He's active. We'll be playing cricket next.
Hmm. Now, that's dangerous.
Cricket's pretty popular. It's active. I don't know why.
Inactive, really?
What do they play?
They play it at the, at the big field, next to the state owned field, at the cornfields, where they, where they have the Lions Fair.
Oh, okay.
And then they play at the park behind the transition, I don't recall it.
The neighborhood kids in my neighborhood play in our cul-de-sac much every day.
Cricket?
Yeah. They've taught all the kids how to play in the neighborhood.
Really?
Yeah, it's a neighborhood.
I just, I don't know what they're doing.
I have no clue how to play.
Especially in India. India's a very popular...
Trying to explain to an out-of-country person baseball, it's the same way to try to explain cricket.
So, alright, so the next item is the request for one-hour extension on Wednesday, November 27th, for the Pleasant Cafe, and the motion reads, motion to approve the one-hour extension at Pleasant Cafe Incorporated, 32 to 36 Main Street, on Wednesday, November 27th, for Black and Orange Night Event. Do we have a second?
Second.
And I guess the police and fire did not have a, a...
Yeah, it's an annual thing.
They didn't have a, they didn't have any complaints.
Are there any police detail?
I don't know if there's a police detail or not. I don't, I don't know if there's any more than usual.
The only thing I'd worry about that night is not that day before Thanksgiving. That's like the number one night for like drunk drivers, just in terms of like making sure that people are not...
Their capacity is 96, so.
Would you recommend a police detail then?
I don't think it might be a good idea, just in terms of over-serving. I mean, because your people...
I agree with that.
Okay.
Get home safely. It's just such a dangerous night statistically.
Yeah, the police did ask if they were gonna have a detail, so that we'll get, we'll just resolve that between now and then. I think they, I think they usually do, but it's been a while.
Yeah, I wouldn't want Pleasant Cafe to have any liability, you know, unnecessarily either, like, you know.
True.
Alright. All those in favor for the hour with a police detail? Alright, so we're scratching, 10:20, 19, Will?
10:20.
Alright, so I scratched it one off, and I'll read the motion with all of them together. And it's a motion to accept and approve the one-day licenses to William Doyle at the Sanctuary, 82 Main Street, made in mass for the following dates. October 26th, concert, 11, November 2nd, concert, November 3rd, fundraiser, November 16th, a concert, and November 23rd, a fundraiser. Do we have a second?
Second. I just have a quick question, and Becky, you may be the one that has the answer to this. Do these licenses have time limitations on, and we just extended an hour to, to two o'clock for the night before Thanksgiving. Do these have the, any time limit on them other than what we...
On the form that's given out, the application form?
They are identified.
They're all identified. If you review the application...
I was looking, I was looking for it. So 6:00 to 11:30 for this one on November 16th, okay. None of them go to 2?
None of them go to 2, no. We don't want to be...
They'll be asleep by then.
I don't, I don't want to be bad.
Alright, so, yeah. Yeah, so one is like 8:00 a.m. to 5:00 p.m.?
Yeah, I see it, okay. I missed that.
Yeah, it does have to be very specific.
Okay.
Perfect. Congratulations. Looks like things are booking up.
Thank you. This is just beginning. We actually have 11 events scheduled, even though, yes, even though we're still finishing everything up, things are looking up, people are calling, both to rent the hall, as well as to get their events booked. So we're looking forward to meeting with you again on November 5th for our full license.
Excellent.
We're about to finish up the construction of the main parts, except for the restaurant, except for the kitchen area. The bar's just about done.
Wow.
So it's a...
I still haven't seen the inside. It's terrible. I know.
Really?
It's very cool.
Yeah, we're excited for you. Do we have another full license left?
I have two.
We have two.
And then the five special.
He's already applied for one of them, right?
Yeah.
Okay. Alright, so any other questions about the events? All those in favor?
Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Good luck.
You know, every time I get shirts, I give them to my friends. 2X. I like a little room when I swing. Alright, the next is the, let's see.
Special town unit.
We don't, do we typically do motions to approve these?
No, we usually just discuss it.
We don't, we usually just assign.
Is this, so are we, are we, let's just, I just want to be clear, are we assigning these to ourselves, or are we accepting these for the, the whole thing?
No, you're assigning them for yourselves.
We've accepted them for the one, alright. So this is just designating them for...
Who's gonna stand up to motion?
Just hash out amongst yourselves who...
Yes.
Okay.
Now, do we...
So the bylaws, the two bylaws are typically Bill Coleman.
Right, but my understanding was there's a selectman assigned to each, is that incorrect?
To make the motion.
Right.
Make the motion, and Bill Coleman will, okay.
Right.
There's only six of them.
Yeah.
Not really presenting anything. It's just, the only one that requires a presentation from the board would be Article 1, right?
And it's pretty straightforward, so.
I can do that. I can do, I can do one.
I'll do the one with Bancroft, Bancroft Street, given that I, I was the one who presented the article that lost.
I mean, I don't know, the minimum property, I could do that if that's okay with you guys.
You want to do both then?
Which one is that?
The minimum standard.
What number?
Number, which number?
That's number two.
It's number two.
Two.
Do you want to do three as well?
That's chap, that's part of it, right?
Yeah.
I'll do the citizen's petition. Citizen's petition.
Okay.
Someone's left.
You get none.
I get municipal charges, Lynn, or no?
No, you're...
No, I guess I just sit.
Number four, zoning by law.
Oh, yeah.
Zoning by law, number four.
That's a thrilling one.
Yay.
And the Coolidge one is just the presentation, there's not, no vote, no presentation?
No, it's being done by Lindy Geer.
Right, it says presentation.
I don't know that, because Lindy and I had talked about, didn't she ask me to present it?
Oh, well then, if that was already agreed to...
But not, no, 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 not the motion, like she had...
Oh, yeah.
Thought Lindy was doing the presentation.
Yeah, my expectation is Lindy.
I'd rather Lindy do it. It makes way more sense.
No, it should be her. She's been navigating the whole time.
I think that needs to be communicated to her, because I don't think that's clear.
Alright, I will.
Alright, so, so one, I will do number one. Armin will do number two. Armin will do number three. Justine will do number four. David has volunteered to do number five. No, Justine will do number four.
Yes.
David will do number five, and Melissa will do number six. And that's that?
Yep.
Does that work for everybody?
Yep.
That's gonna be inefficient.
Great, great.
No heavy lifting.
No. The sidewalk maintenance and service plan...
If you'd like, Mr. Chairman, we can have Megan give a...
Alright, alrighty. Let me just read the motion, and we'll get a second, and then we'll have the discussion, and Megan can lead us in that discussion. The motion is to accept the maintenance and service plan for the Parker Street sidewalk abutting and in the vicinity of the Maynard Crossing development as presented. Two seconds?
Second.
Okay. Megan, if you would.
The attached maintenance plan and service plan for the Parker Street sidewalk abutting and in the vicinity of Maynard Crossing Development, which is identified in Exhibit A, has been reviewed and approved by our town engineer, Juan Amico, town council, Lisa Mead, and William De Petri of the Capital Group in Maynard Crossing. So this agreement basically outlines the commitment of Maynard Crossing to maintain the sidewalk, including snow removal, seasonal sweeping, trash pickup, and repair and replacement of any defective or damaged material. And the town of Maynard is free and harmless from and against any and all claims, liabilities, losses, damages, attorney fees to any person or property, and other expenses incurred as a result of the failure of the owner to timely comply with the terms and covenants of this sidewalk maintenance service plan.
And has town council reviewed this to confirm, so they're happy with the indemnification language?
Yes, yes. They added it, Holland.
Okay. Go town council.
My only question would be, because that stretch of road is utilized by kids walking to and from school. So I would be concerned that, that we somehow have, and I don't know if perhaps we already do, have it in, clarified in some way as to the time at which they will clear sidewalks in the morning, so that kids can get to school. I mean, we, sometimes Maynard doesn't get to our sidewalks by the time they should. So, you know, the standard needs to be probably better than our own, but I just don't want it to be a safety hazard for kids walking to school, or walking home from school, for that matter, and be, having to be out on 27, 27 as they're doing so. So I don't know what the, what type of agreement, if at all, we have with them to assure that it's done in a timely manner to allow for kids to go to and from school.
So, yeah, I mean, so I don't think that wasn't, that was not included in, in the agreement here. But if you'd like to add it in, then we can...
I'd like to find some way, and I don't know what they do traditionally in other developments. I mean, this is the first, this is a first for us, as far as development of this nature, where they're taking ownership of that stretch.
Yes.
You know, the other question would be, our sidewalk, our sidewalk plow goes traveling down that roadway, how are they gonna get from where they stop up at Field Street and then start again beyond the other end?
Yeah, that's a good question. But, so they are gonna go around it, because the, because of the change of the material that Capital Group requested.
The sidewalk material.
The sidewalk material, you know, it's, it's pavers.
Yeah, I saw them putting it in.
So you can't use that machine.
Delicate. Yeah, so we, so we, you know, we said, you know, we'll, we'll consider this material, but we're not maintaining it, because we are not equipped to manage this. And it would be, you know, our equip, we're just not gonna get into that. Like, you know, we all have kind of the same materials, so if you want to use this, then we need to have a really strict agreement for, you know, how you're gonna take care of it. So that, that's kind of where this came from. So, you know, typically, if, if it was a different material, we would be maintaining it, but since it's, since they kind of requested this one, we said we can do it. But I think, you know, if that, if we want to add in timing to this, then we can look at that.
Well, it also raises, I mean, I'm sure our DPW has an idea as to how they can get beyond the Parker Street project to have safe sidewalks down as you go further down towards the Sudbury line.
Oh, of course, that would not be eliminated.
So that's one issue, but the, I think the timing on it is important, to make sure that on, that the sidewalk is cleared for opening a school and for after-school hours, so the kids can traverse safely. And again, I don't know, you know, there are, there are case laws changed, but relative to, you know, obligations during snow and how long they have, if they're, if they're taking the property, that's their concern, really. But, you know, if a snowstorm happens and the kids are let go early, you want to make sure that they're properly maintaining it then, too. But, you know, laws have changed recently, or case law changed within the last five years relative to slip and falls on ice. But I'm just concerned that our kids don't get stuck trudging through, because they haven't gotten to it.
So, don't we have, I feel like the DPW in general has a plan for some of the walkable routes.
They do.
That they, so can we figure out the timing for what that typically has to do, and add that to the contract? That they, so can we figure out the timing for what that typically has to do and add that to the contract?
Yeah, well, many times, many times the, excuse me, but many times the school, the, um, the, my understanding is the superintendent speaks with the DPW director in order to decide whether or not to have school, and they base it upon where they are in their cleanup on that particular day. If these guys aren't included in the mix, you've got a group of kids that are coming from beyond Parker Street that might hit a patch of snow that hasn't been cleaned, and they're expected to get to school.
I agree, we need to add language.
That was my point, because, exactly, because how are you going to hold them accountable to make sure that they're coordinating with the town?
I agree, so we need to specify that, because it does say, you know, even the snow removal and/or de-icing of sidewalks employing materials provided town, that's kind of open. And that's fine, but we can be more specific, something to the effect of it needs to be in accordance with the school hours, both opening and closing, as well as as needed directed by the superintendent's office or the DPW office, we can, we can get to that level of detail.
I was going to say, can we direct them to communicate with, kind of like the, it's kind of like the superintendent communicates with, it adds a layer somehow, but somehow bring them on as part of that conversation as well?
We can, but maybe, I'd like to think about that a little more, because I don't know if I want them calling us or I don't want them calling.
Right, exactly, I don't know how it will work, but.
I'm sure they have the same problem in other developments, so it won't be anything new for them, but we're just.
Yeah, we'll bounce it back to.
We're just, so I withdraw that motion and then just send it back, kind of take a second look as far as the snow and.
Thank you so much for your feedback.
Ice removal for schools. Mr. Johnson, Town Administrator Report, three pages this, this time around.
Is it three pages?
No, it's a white paper. It's more than, more than that in pages, but.
Got the four.
Yeah, four pages plus three documents.
Yeah, so.
By the way, I, I personally appreciate the white paper on the Beijing School, that was, that was pretty cool.
So what, so what, uh, Selectman Dick Carrieran is referring to is, was drafted originally by, as it says, the top town planner, Bill Nemser, but it's great. It'll allow us to advocate for the town and for our pursuits, specifically in regards to the Beijing Royal Schools proposal for a school at 111 Pattenwood Road. So this white paper, as it's called, is given to delegations, so at the state level and federal level, just to advocate for the town, to kind of meet our needs as we're trying to partner with them. It's good partnership so far, but we, whereas we're trying to be anticipatory of what their needs may be and how our town can help them meet their needs, because we're trying to do that, we have to be open, and we may need partnerships at the state and federal level. So I encourage the public to read the Town Administrator's Report as well as the attachments. It also includes, um, a, uh, first draft or first round newsletter, as it's called, but it's an email that Megan put together and released on a trial basis, just a little handful, like, how many?
It's about forty people.
Yeah, four, actually, it's pretty good. So, um, but, you know, it's one of the goals of the board is to, is to enhance public communication, and this is, we think, a good step towards that. It's just, it's just the sort of highlights, and most of it is actually on the website.
Yeah, so, you know, exactly, but this is cool.
I know snippets of it.
Not everybody goes to the websites.
No, they don't, no, they don't, and, or, you know, my understanding is even on social media, a lot of those answers could be answered if you just go to the website, but if you don't know to look, then this is just a good step towards that. Megan says it's not that much more work, but.
I like, I like doing it.
But she likes doing it, and, and I think it's, it's good, it's something that, that I also.
It's a good cheat sheet, yeah.
Can we do an email sign-up list at the twenty eighth, uh, special town meeting for people who voluntarily want to receive this?
We need to look into what the, because I don't have a contract with contact yet, so, so this was only a trial, was this free?
This was free, yes, but I think that's a good opportunity, so.
It could also be phrases like, if we are to move forward with a mailing list, would you like to receive it?
That's a good point.
And then we always start collecting emails.
We can print this out so you could see the kind of thing.
Yeah.
I like that idea.
But we need to look at, uh, I'm not sure, I don't know if we, if we look, well, we need to look at what the contract terms would be, what the costs are, and then, but I think this is a good approach.
I also want to point out that kind of, everyone's kind of referred to it, but the fact that, you know, the Town Administrator Report, whatever, everything that we're talking about right now is, is things that everyone can access, if you go to the board, I mean, there's probably a number of different ways you can access it, but even the white paper that we just talked about, if you go to agendas, if you go to the packet for tonight, it's all the way at the bottom under Town Administrator Report. It's not something that just we can see, so I think it's important for people to know that those things are out there and, you know, freely available.
And the Town Administrator Report has its own webpage for the website. So, no, I mean, but, because.
Which is great.
The very next day, we sent it to Dave Griffin, and he puts on the website.
Yeah.
So, yeah, with the.
Usually it's pushed on Facebook, too.
The issue, oh, it is?
Sometimes, yeah.
Excellent, so the issue is, as most government always has an issue with, is publicity, like, we're not good about advertising what we do.
Absolutely.
This is just another step towards.
Yeah, we, it's funny, because we've been talking at our EDC meetings a lot, too, because that's one of the things, that's, I'm glad that this is, you know, getting done. So I got a question for you, because I wasn't aware that maybe unless I was sleeping during that time, but we already set a date for our roundtable for the all things Maynard?
We did, I threw it out there, but I was, I didn't have it booked yet, so I threw it out there November twelfth.
Twelve, okay.
But at the time, I hadn't heard back from Sterling Golf, whether golf courses.
So it's set for that date?
That's the date.
That's the.
What day, we could have?
It's a Tuesday.
Yeah, that's fine.
The idea was to kind of keep it consistent.
And then the other thing is that goes under the DPW report?
Yes.
It says that the signs are going up for the wayfinding in this fall, so when is that going to happen?
I saw Town Engineer Wayne Amico, Lynn Affair, dig down, were you there?
Oh, they were meeting tonight, yes, they were meeting tonight, that's right.
Yeah, yeah, we're, um, it's going okay, we're working on it, there are a couple of issues with the fabrication of the signs that, um, we're bringing back to the vendor to correct.
Oh, okay.
So the installation date is to be determined, but it is a main priority, so we're working on it.
So, I mean, I don't, I, I, I don't know who was here talking about it, like, we need a moderator, we don't need a moderator or anything, we do it ourselves.
The direction I got from the board.
The roundtable, you don't have?
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
No, 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 we don't, especially the moderator they had last night.
We're hosting it, that was the worst, well, that was the worst thing ever. So we'll, we'll host it ourselves and do it ourselves.
That's right, that's, yeah, that's.
The agenda, I mean, there isn't an agenda, the agenda is, it's an open discussion among the three groups we're talking about.
There isn't an agenda because it's a public meeting, but yes.
But, but I understand, but there's no itemizing, there's no items specifically to discuss.
No topics, that's right.
I mean, we can all guess what some of them are going to be, but, you know, it's just, is what it is.
Yeah, it would have been nice if the capital planning committee had been up and running, that would have been.
So we need to make sure there's a flag there, flood allegiance, all that stuff, I don't think there's a flag in that room.
I don't know, but we, yeah, we want to do that.
Not a flag in that room.
Okay.
So we got to do that and make people happy.
Okay, we'll find it.
Everyone. Is that it?
Just two seconds, Mr. Chairman, let me just.
Until rush.
But I did, I did, to echo Armin's sentiments, sentiments, the, I liked, I appreciate the report on the, the school, that helped.
Oh, Mr. Chairman, yes, two more things, Mr. Chairman.
A whole lot of work, by the way, for, not, for you as well as for those guys ahead of them.
Yeah.
Did a lot of moving parts.
Wait, for what again, I'm sorry?
For the Beijing School.
The Beijing School.
Oh, yeah, 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 no, and, and, uh, we've had a good relationship, or a good partnership with the school.
Yeah, I saw that they met with the high school.
Before you, before, so I don't forget, did they, did they do the lottery yet for the housing, the, the View, the other one?
Does that sound familiar?
Was it going to be on the twenty, is it this, the twenty second of this month?
Uh, you know, I'll have to get back to you on that.
Not sure.
There was a lottery, remember we got, we had it in our, one of our last packets?
Yeah.
What, for the Camellia Garden?
No, for the housing.
The View.
Oh, the house, the View, that's all being done, that's, that was, um.
I think it's not the View, it's the one out back.
That's the one.
Oh, Camellia Gardens.
Oh, Camilla, what is it, how do you pronounce it?
Camellia Gardens.
Camilla?
Camilla Gardens?
So Camellia Gardens is the senior living.
Yeah, they were going to do a lottery for housing.
That gets done by the developer.
Yeah, right, yeah, I know that, I just was just wondering what the results of it were, or if anyone had any feedback.
Not sure.
But I don't, I, I'm, I'm asking the question, I think it was the twenty seconds, for some reason, but.
We'll definitely check.
You had something else, Greg?
Uh, only two things, so, one, there is the downtown trick-or-treat on October twenty fourth, so I encourage the public to, to support it. And then secondly, so the phones were down in Town Hall for, uh, too long, they were down for too long. As it turns out, phone systems are more complicated than I would prefer them to be at Town Hall, and so what I've asked is Drive Tech to come up with the recommendations as to adjust, how to, how to prevent this for the future, so I'm waiting for Bob Falco, the president of the Drive Tech, he's the town's IT consultant, to tell us what we're going to do about it in the future. I don't have that answer right now.
Okay. I mean, it's, you know, it happened, it is what it is, it's over, but the last time it happened, like, twenty-four months ago, we bought a bunch of phones you can just plug in and use, and I don't know, like, I mean, I'm not, I'm just saying, I don't know where they went, but we should be able to do that.
Fair, but I, my understanding was it was something out, out of the town in the first place, something down in Framingham. I, I, we're looking into it, and I'm having Bob really do a deep dive into it all.
And if you plug in a phone to use it, don't you have to still have the phone line that works?
Yes, but my understanding was the infrastructure was good for Town Hall, it just wasn't, nine-one-one never went down for the public's, nine-one-one was always good. But, um, and then for some reason, internal was good, too, so within the Town Hall.
Within the off, within the building?
Yes, but not external, I.
No, okay, well, strange.
That's not good.
Yes.
Stranger things.
My policy background doesn't tell me.
The internet wasn't affected?
No. Right, so it wasn't the, it wasn't the data line, I don't know, I, again, I went down the rabbit hole, and I decided just let Bob tell me how we're supposed to fix it, then, that's, that's the end, that's it, Mr. Chairman.
Okay.
Back to the View, affordable housing lottery, I just found it, um, it is completed applica, so this is for the View, not for Camellia Gardens. Completed applications must be delivered or postmarked by two PM on October twenty-nine, and the lottery for eligible households will be held on November thirteenth at six PM at the trustees' room of the Maynard Public Library, so just a quick.
Okay, thanks.
You're welcome.
Miss Google? Google that! All right, so, just a quick update, Justine can add to it, because she's part of it, the, um, Justine's our, I think she's the chair, but she's not officially the chair, but she's acting as the chair, I don't, it's something.
Oh, not the chair.
Of the, um, Hometown Heroes Banner Program, so we're at the point now where we're devising strategies to fundraise, and we're also at the point where we're talking about banner placements, and there's a lot of discussions around both, because where the banners, where some people want the banners to go, at least in the opinion of some, they're blocked by trees, and what's the sense of going through all this work to have trees block the banners, and then one of the members of our committee was part of this taking place in another community, and he said that, um, N-Star will come out and actually, they will actually do the work of trimming the trees along the road to, um, give better sightlines, but we're all, that's all still a ways away and, uh, coming, um, coming up, but we're, at the point where we're talking about fundraising and how we coordinate with, um, the Sesquicentennial Group, because they're, it's scheduled to kind of launch on Memorial Day, along with some events that they have planned, and the first day, all of the banners will likely, um, if the town gives us a permit, likely be, all the banners will likely be displayed at one time in one place, and that would be along the, either along the fence or along the facade of the front of the, um, home bleachers of Alumni Field, just in a row, so everyone can see them all, and then they'll, um, they'll go to their, um, you know, final place to be viewed, and Justin has done this in, in his prior job, so he's familiar with the program and, uh, actually had some great ideas about better ways of doing things and some cost savings, so, uh, we're working with, we're now working with him to get us some information on those type of things, but I'm just kind of curious if anyone here has any, um, opinion as to where they would like to see them, if they would like to see them at some point permanently, permanently housed predominantly in the downtown area, or the current.
Memorial Park, be the.
Well, the current plan is kind of along Parker Street up and then down towards, um, towards the high school in that way, or to continue on Parker Street up by, um, um, the development, but then again, they will own those poles, so that's, that's, that's kind of a touchy subject, too. Who owns the poles, who pays for the poles, and what do you attach to them, and typically, most of those people attach their own advertising and notifications on their poles.
You're also asking after the fact, after we take them down, where do we house them, is that what you're saying?
Well, so they're going to, they're going to come off the, off of the, wherever they're, wherever they're displayed the first day for the event, and then they're going to be placed, you know, after that weekend, after Memorial Day weekend, they're going to be placed where they're going to be for the time being. And the reason, one of the reasons why we're kind of, correct me if I'm wrong, Justine, but one of the reasons why we are where we are is because the Sesquicentennial people have designs on doing some things with the poles and stuff downtown, and that's going to only last for however long, and I'm of the opinion that, you know, these are, these are things that we want people to see, and right now, we have forty-seven?
Forty-six.
Forty-six, um, forty-six kept, killed in action, Maynard residents killed in action, so we don't have forty-six poles down there, but I, but it's just something that, you know, in my mind, it's something that, you know, that's where most people will see them, is downtown, even on one-seventeen, you're not really going slow enough in Maynard to, um, see them, and it's much, much more, uh, our one-seventeen is much more tree-lined than the area on one-seventeen in Bolton where they have these, they're, they're cleared way back off the road, and they're highly visible, we would have a tough time duplicating that, so.
I did look at, um, I did look at Powder Mill the other day, and Powder Mill, it seemed like in front of, uh, I almost said in front of Victory, um, in front of Jam Time. There seemed to be probably about, probably fif, at least fifteen poles there that seemed pretty clear, um.
Yeah, there's no trees.
On the opposite side.
On the other side, yeah.
Right, um, you know, so I don't know if it's a matter of us finding either, either, you know, talking to Sesquicentennial Committee and seeing if we can come to an agreement for downtown somehow, or if we just pick, like, if we pick Powder Mill in front of Memorial Park, in front of Town Hall and Alumni Field, and get, you know, ten each, I, I don't know, so that's kind of where, we're still in the discussion stage.
To Chris's point, I think the place that's going to be seen the most will be downtown.
True.
You're walking, and you don't have to, you drive slow, hopefully.
Anyways, just, we're just moving forward with that, little by little, Kate, Kate, there's a couple of different grants and stuff that we're working to try and get, so, that's that.
One suggestion that perhaps, if, and I don't know who's working on what aspect, but if there is an idea, if there is a thought to have these initially displayed at Alumni Field, I wonder, we might be running loose on time, given that May really isn't that far off in the grand scheme of things. If somebody could contact the people who run the Moving Wall, which is the recreation of the Vietnam Wall that travels around the country, and perhaps bring the Moving Wall to Memorial, I mean, to, um, to the football field, Alumni Field, at the same time that we have, because it's, you know, given it's a special.
Right.
Event, perhaps they, they could work at, Moving Wall is, I've never seen the Moving Wall, and obviously, I've seen the real wall, but the Moving Wall is supposed to be really, really impactful for people.
I wonder how many years out, I wonder how many years out on Memorial Day it's booked, though.
Well, that's true.
It's worth the try, though.
I think it's a great idea, but I'm, as you're saying, I'm saying, we might be behind the eight ball getting, but we can ask.
I don't know who's responsible.
All you can do is ask.
We can reserve it now for like twenty-four to.
And Kate, and Kate is.
Yeah, that might be the case.
And Kate is in the, Kate is in the process of getting Congresswoman Trahan to sit down, she's going to grab her by the neck, is what she said, but that's Kate. So Kate's going to get her to come and sit and have a discussion with at least one of us or more, and, um, just to talk about, you know, fire stations, schools, all the things that are big-ticket items for us, and what, what's available federally and what, what she sees as possibilities on the horizon among those things, and then we've asked a couple of things from, uh, her assistant, and he's kind of, I don't know, he's told somebody he's, what he's doing, but he hasn't told us. So, um, they're aware of what our requests are, but we haven't.
Who's this, every time, Congressman Jones?
John.
Who is this, who you work for?
Congressman.
Trahan, Laurie Trahan.
Congressman Trahan.
What's his name?
Joe.
Joe.
Joe, Joe, what's his name, Thornton or?
Thibodeau.
Thibodeau, Joe Thibodeau, yeah, Joe Thibodeau.
That sounds like Thornton.
So Joe, yeah, T H, so Joe Thibodeau, so I reached out to him, and I, I've talked to him a couple of times, I haven't heard back on the latest request, because, and that was to give us a number of flags equal to the number of banners we have, so that the idea is that the flags would hang flat and the banners would hang above them on an angle.
American flags.
Yeah, American flags, so that they're.
We can, we can, we can do it.
They're good for that, so he's, she's going to get, um, a, a meeting with, with her and everything, and see where we go. And that's it for Hometown Heroes and me, um, let's see, Armin?
Yeah, I just got two things to share, one is, um, at the last EDC meeting, one of the ideas that came up is that maybe the selectmen could consider, uh, setting a auditorium for, uh, the marijuana shops, uh, to limit it right now to three, and think about maybe looking at that and seeing how that works out before we decide, or think about, you know, going forward.
Legally, we can't do that unless we bring it back to town.
Even, even, so even to set up.
We can, we can analyze each person that comes in front of us legally and make a determination on whether they're a good fit for our town, because that was struck down at the last town meeting, if we want to create a further restriction as to number in town like we tried to do before.
No, not restriction, we're just saying, you know.
No, not restriction, we're just saying, you know, just-
Delay it?
Delay it.
So, I, I don't, I think Kate explained that we can't do that without a town meeting vote.
That was just an idea that I thought.
Yeah, but we don't have to, but we don't have to grant a license or enter into an HCA with everyone that comes in front of them.
Got you, I know.
Right, so-
Which is what I said, I said then, but-
Yeah, so we just need, to be able, we can't just blanket, say we're not gonna have any more.
No, no, and I'm not saying we're gonna, we just want to see how this works out before we move forward.
We, we can't do that if people come in front of us illegally. Even, you know, I think we'd all kind of want to see how that plays out, you know, three is plenty, without knowing the effect. But I don't think, it's also something that we can propose bringing back to the spring town meeting, though, as a board with a warrant article and explaining to people that, you know, we have three and people keep coming, you know, at some point, like, we should take a break and like, see if we can get the town to vote for it.
And I, I'm not sure if, if even, we'd have to look into it. Because of the way Maynard's vote went on the marijuana question, it may, in order to have a full, may just, that may just be to prevent it from totally. I don't know about the, I'm thinking things through, because I know that there was a requirement to have a town meeting vote and a ballot vote on the issue. But I think that's only if you wanted to completely-
That's where a ban.
Put a ban on, yeah.
Monatorium is a temporary.
Yeah.
Right.
And then the ban is forever.
I thought Kate had said, though, that we couldn't do that the last time she was here.
Yeah, so what you're referring to is correct. And, yes, but, and even the question of doing a cap on the amount of establishments was brought forward at last annual town meeting, and that also failed at town meeting. So, seems, because of all those, the direction of the, of the public seems to be to allow them. So, I think, so Melissa's correct, like, you were kind of obligated to continue to entertain each host community agreement as it is.
But I, just to Melissa's point, maybe we could think about revisiting, not setting the cap, but putting maybe a kind of stop for us for a while to see how things work out.
Right, but, but as Attorney Federoff pointed out, short of that town meeting approved policy, your policy can't, can't conflict with that. So, you, you can't set your own policy of a cap at this time.
So, so I think that part of what we heard from, I know this is what we heard from FinCom, was that they didn't like the limit of two. I mean, I personally, and I, I know I'm the one who put it forward, I was comfortable with two because it was a concrete, there was a, there was a reason for that number, it was the twenty percent, whatever.
Right.
So, but I, I'm wondering if there's a way for us to reach out and find out what is, you know, is three the number that might pass a town meeting? Or is it four? Or if we do come-
I think we just keep bringing warrant articles. We just keep bringing a warrant article on the street and like-
See what happens.
I don't see a harm in that, just-
No, the worst that happens is it gets struck, like, it doesn't go down, yeah.
So, I just need to show some harm, that we're doing our job when people's concerned about what's going on.
Absolutely, absolutely.
So, in a couple of months.
I mean, we, we, that's the thing, is we did our job because we were concerned about it and we put it forward, but the town didn't, you know, agree, which is fine.
When we get closer to next, to next meeting, just ask Kate how you would have to do that. Because there's gotta be a specific language to it, a very similar, very specific language, especially given that every vote that the town has taken has been in support of marijuana and more marijuana.
And I also, I want to commend Megan, because she's recommending bringing these individuals that are right now in the process, to come to EDC meetings and just address that, because they are gonna be part of the economic development in town, so.
I'm even considering having proposed host community agreement pursuers, like, the next people to come, go to the EDC first. Because that, that way, you at least have some sort of sense of what the community would, would prefer to see. We haven't worked that through. And I don't know if we have anyone on the, anyone on the, in the lineup?
You know, I meet with people pretty regularly, but not many have, only, there's only been a few that have come through that have been serious enough to meet with you. And those are the ones, you know, you've seen before. But I do, I have had a handful of meetings, I think I have one later this week.
Oh, okay.
You gotta wonder if- From the folks on-
Yeah, the one, open table.
Nation Street? Have we heard anything from them?
The one that does not have a host community agreement?
So, it's Olaf and Stephanie Linton?
Oh, that one.
The first one.
I haven't heard from them in a while.
The gentleman that wore the hat and the, and his-
Oh, I didn't see that.
The guy with the beard.
Is that the one with the open table?
That's open table.
No, so, two different groups, so he's referring to-
I'm referring to the, the first guy on the town that-
Oh, Wellspring, yeah, Wellspring.
And you're talking about, what was it?
No, that's the one that's like, weed or else or something.
Cultivation experts. So, yeah, so Wellspring, we, we have been in touch with them for some permitting things recently. And I think they'd probably be one of the first groups that we would invite to the EDC, since they're one of the first ones to apply. Cultivation experts, I have not heard from them in a few weeks. I think they're looking at some locations, but-
So, the rumor had it that Wellspring's looking for another location, is that true or no?
No.
Okay.
Not that I have one.
Do we know if they've, if they've satisfied the police department's concerns about safety and security? Because they hadn't at, at last.
No, I don't believe they have, or else, that's a requirement before, before, it's part of the application, they have to have a police chief-approved security plan.
Can we ask them for an update for the board as to where they are in like the permitting process? Just because they were the first, anyway.
On the general, on the general topic itself, I wonder, and maybe I'm wrong, but the excitement of the residents relative to marijuana and marijuana joints for lack, no pun intended, for the, you know, marijuana business locations, was seemingly driven by revenue. Not necessarily by the, the issue of, you know, I don't think, I don't think there's many people in the grand scheme that are, that are opposed to selling of the product. And I don't think that that's the issue. I think it's the, the volume of the number of shops that people are expressing the most concern with. But I think my sense was, and maybe others thought differently, but my sense of, of town meeting at that discussion was, why give up the opportunity for more revenue? And so, I, I don't know if we've really analyzed the market. And wonder if, if you have ten shops in one town the size of Maynard, are we going to get that much more revenue? Or is the market saturated to such an extent that the market is the market and you're gonna get the same volume, you're just gonna have more stores with less sales? And so, therefore, are we not, you know, not kicking off our nose to spite our face, or whatever the term is, to seek out these places, when in reality, all we're doing is, is limiting, we're playing with the market, and the market's not gonna change. It's gonna be the same number of sales. And I don't know if we analyzed that for town meeting enough, I don't know if we presented that argument.
We didn't.
But it was driven by a revenue discussion, more so than-
I think the problem was, like, we weren't prepared for that, and then FinCom took it in the other direction. And I feel like that manipulated the votes to an extent. Because I think they were speaking out of like, you know, speculation and a whim. And I think that hurt things, because I agree with you, I think there's market saturation.
Yeah.
You know, it's the same thing of like, three of any store came to this town, it's a tiny town.
And to a degree, that's a little of my concern regarding FinCom. I mean, sometimes people look at that as a blessing, and, and, you know, the town people vote based on what FinCom recommends. And we gotta, you know, somehow or another, I think it was maybe a great idea from revenue standpoint, but to David's point, this, that market's gonna get saturated eventually. By the time these individuals come to, to play in our, in our town, who's to say what it's gonna be? It's gonna take like two, three years before these guys probably come up over here, from what I'm hearing.
We really don't understand the business, so we don't, you know, so you, now that there are some established businesses, like, for example, The Brookline Place, when that opened up, it was all this news about how, you know, it was packed, jam-packed, or the one in Leicester is probably a better example.
It's not as packed anymore.
And I wonder what their revenue is now, that it's become established and whatever. And are we, are they actually seeing this boon of revenue that, that we might have expected? Or is that just a smokescreen? And reality, in reality, it's just, okay, it's just another business and you're gonna saturate the marketplace. I don't know.
Well, I get, I get kind of concerned about that, too, as these people come to us wanting to enter into HCAs, and they're coming with these, what look like grossly insulated P&Ls that aren't based on everything to try to make a sales pitch, like, where they're getting their information. Because that happened with the one that wants to go in next to Open Table. It was like, your numbers look great, but like, I can put numbers on a paper, too, for any business and tell you that that's our P&L projections, it doesn't mean it's gonna happen.
So, I think the market would likely naturally, you know, that would probably disincentivize people to come to town once shops start to open anyways. If they, one, there's a limitation of space, there just isn't places to go. And then, two, once, once, two, potentially three shops open, I think people would probably see that the, you know, the, I can't remember what the terminology is, but, but, yeah, the market's gone. Like, there, there is no market share to go around anymore. But that's hard to determine at this point, but-
It wasn't a deterrent, deterrent, though, for the new people, like, the Open Table, next Open Table people.
Well, they were trying to beat the, I'm trying to beat NewCan.
But if two aren't a deterrent, like, why would three be a deterrent?
But I, that might, but that's true, what, what is the magic number? Like, at what point does the next proposal, the speculator say, four is, and I still get my fair share.
The odd part about the, the town meeting vote in the, in the FinCom is the, they didn't suggest two or three, or it was more like, as many as we can get to maximize the revenue. And that's, you know, I don't think, you know, I don't know, who would have thought that we would have, you know, three groups with HCAs and, you know, and, and two in line together? I mean, it's-
No, that's true.
You know, that's, that, none of us thought that, we'd end up with this number of people.
But I also, I, I mean, I really don't see that many more places, like, I, I, I don't know, we've been, I don't know where else they would go.
Yeah.
I may be completely mistaken, but as, as when, especially Megan knows more than I do, so, but I can't think of a spot.
There's a lot, there's just a lot to it, and there's no one that has, no one in the state has, yet, has a year's data.
Track record, there's no track record.
There's no, there's no one with the data to support anyone's claims or anyone's dollars and cents or anything else.
Right. So, we're trying to do what's best for the town, and at this point, that's-
Market's gonna be saturated in a short period of time here. And, you know, the other part of that is, you know, if you're gonna, if you're gonna saturate a particular area, because by permit they can only in, only can go in particular areas.
That's right.
You're gonna better have some satellite parking and other things, which, where are you gonna do that in town?
Those are agreements that I worked out.
You're not gonna have that in town, there's no-
Oh, we're, that's right, that's a good point to have, I hope all our markets are full, but-
What satellite parking lot that we have, that, you know, approaches what they have in Hudson and some of the other communities.
But one thing I would counter, Greg, on your comment about, there's not much else placed for them to go.
Yeah.
You know, they're, they're allowed to go in a commercial development, kind of a commercial zone. And Route 62 with Powder Mill's road stretch, we are hoping will evolve into a, an economic engine of some type. And, you know, just tonight, in your, in your report, there's a mention about redevelopment of one of the small little places of land. So, to speculate, to say right now, well, there's no place else for them to go. If we have these places out there and 62 starts to-
That's a great point.
There could be a number of places along 62.
Like, today, there may not be a lot of-
Today, there might not be, so we have to think, we have to think long-term, not just what's facing us today.
In fact, if NewCan was smart, that's what they should be looking at.
But then, when FinCom say, great, well, then why would we limit? Because Powder Mill's gonna be open up soon.
If the Beijing school goes in on Powder Mill, does that, but does that meet the school requirement? Like, with that restriction we put in?
Yes.
But it's limited to what, three hundred feet or something? So, that's, it's probably three hundred feet up on the hill, we're not gonna have any-
Currently zoning allows, on one side of Powder Mill Road, the same side as the Victory Plaza and Jam Time. I know that Jam Time has been a deterrent for some of the potential applicants, thinking about, you know, the neighbors and the butters and like, you know, uses that draw kids has been kind of a concern. I think also, currently, there just isn't as much available on that stretch, but, I mean, you know, you're right, it's zoned for it, so, you know, however.
Anything else?
Yeah, I got one more thing. I, myself, just like Melissa, I had the opportunity to attend the working group for the Coolidge Building. And I know Melissa was at one of the meetings also, and I'm sure you probably agree with me how impressive that group is. I think they do such a great job, and Lindy's was doing a fabulous job of leading that group. And I'm, the only reason I'm bringing this up is I think they have a little concern that they're, they're hoping that when they come in front of us with their recommendations, that we kind of take it seriously, because they've done so much work, and they want to make sure that we take it seriously with their, when their recommendations come up. So, that was just my, my two cents. I probably could say something in regards to that, too.
Yeah, I was really impressed with the group, and with the, I sat in on two of the developer interviews. And I thought the proposals they submitted were unbelievable and thorough and really community-focused, which I thought was great.
Both of them were awesome, the two-
Why would you think they wouldn't think we would take it seriously?
I don't know, that's just their theory, because they want to make sure that we take it seriously.
Yeah, I mean, I think like, just the time that you and I put in, like, to go to those things and read everything and participate, like, shows how seriously the board is taking it. And I, I do think that committee put in a tremendous amount of effort, coming up to speed on everything, and learning the zoning and the laws surrounding that, because it was a really complicated property to have to deal with.
They got some other people on, on-
Blessed.
Yeah.
It's a great group.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Talk about a model group, all other groups should be like.
Oh, I've, yeah, I wish we had that group in other towns.
She's in charge, so.
Yeah, big time.
Oh, yeah, she's hyper-organized, too.
Yeah, super-organized.
Yep.
All right, that's it for me.
All right. Melissa?
So, I did the political thing, obviously. Today, I sat in on the final round of interviews for the town clerk position, so hopefully your references will check out and that will move forward. You know, I'm sorry to hear about the chief, but, you know, I think there's been so much going on and everything's moving in a great direction. And even the sidewalks on 117 look so good every day when I drive by.
Yeah.
Yeah, so, exciting things are happening.
Okay. Justine?
Just a couple of things.
Where's your list?
First, I don't have a list tonight. First is Maynard Fest, I think we were all at Maynard Fest, and, or at the Lyman's for Maynard Fest. And it was an amazing event this year. It is every year, but it was just, the weather was perfect.
The weather helped, yeah.
It, it just, it was, it was just packed. It was great to see all the members of the community, it was great to see all the different vendors, it was great to see all the other committees. It's just truly an amazing day. I appreciate all the elected officials that come out. It was great to see Kate and Joe Kennedy and Lori Trahan. And I really appreciate that they take the time to come out and see our, our little town and, and everything. So, so it was definitely a very special day, very good. The other question I have, actually, Mr. Chair, is I actually had a question about something, and I'm wondering if we can put it on the next agenda, regarding a motion we had done with the Sesquicentennial Committee to give them the seed money.
That's right.
And so, I've been having some conversations with the Sesquicentennial Committee. And one of the things that when they talk, when we did, when we originally did our motion, we gave them $25,000 out of our community development money.
Downtown enhancement.
The town, okay, downtown enhancement, thank you.
Is that part of the beep? No.
The beep comes from that as well.
Yeah, it comes from that. So, one of the things that, when we, when I've been talking to them, one of the things that they have, that a number of the different committee members have said to me is that they, so it was $25,000 and that they have to pay us back. And so, I, I went back into, I watched the meeting, I looked at the minutes, and the proposal they gave us, the memo they gave us at the top of it, said that they would pay us back. But when we made the motion and when we discussed it, there was no mention of that. So, I just kind of wanted to get all on the same page as far as whether or not we, we are expecting them to basically raise $25,000 to get back to us, plus raise the money to actually host the Sesquicentennial. So, so that's kind of where I was trying to, I was wondering if we can discuss that.
Yeah, no, so, so, yeah, so to the point Justine is making, we, Justine and I discussed it at the beginning and the end of the, one of the Hometown Heroes things, because we're working closely with that group. And I, I said, for one of the five, I have no recollection that we made it a condition or a request that they pay that money back. I thought it was-
Can we look at the minutes?
You know, I thought, I thought it was a, you know, typical of other things that we've done for town committees to fund different events or different types of things. I, I had no expectation that they would be working to pay that money back to the town, so.
Well, I think that the, the general understanding that I had, anyway, was that they talked about 1970, when, I think it was 1970, when they, they raised enough money to pay the town back. And it was sort of put in that fashion. I don't think there was ever an expectation that we would get the money back, but it could happen if they raised enough money that they met their costs and exceeded their costs and-
We can leave that up to them.
We'll leave that up to them.
But that's, that, you know, I don't know what they would do with the money afterwards,